Plagues and Legits.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, for a rooted stand, one nation, a unified, individual, representative, and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miriam Abadamas.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro is excused. Vice Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here.
And Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here. Thank you all. We'll move on with our agenda now with a report on closed session, confirmation of reportable action. Mr. Ross?
Mayor and council members, members of the public, the council was called to order at 5:08 PM by Vice Mayor Washington, and the reason for that was there is a matter considered under anticipated litigation from which the mayor was disqualified. After calling the meeting to order an open session, the council adjourned to close session to address the matters agendized for consideration, taking one of the matters under Agenda Item Number Two out of order. Mayor Garcia joined the closed session at 5:26, and the closed session concluded at 6:15 PM. With respect to each of the matters agendized for closed session consideration, I will do a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with Government Code Section 54, 97.1. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll proceed with our agenda. Proclaimations and presentations. With great pleasure this evening, we have a proclamation, March 2023 is American Red Cross Month. Do we have a recipient for the... Thank you. Come forward to the diets, please. Seem to have been missing a piece of the agenda here, so... Well, I will go forward with the proclamation. We can fill that part in afterwards. Just tell us a bit about yourself and your... Oh, here it is, right here. Oh, we found it. Pam Chappell.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good to have you here. See, you've been a Napa County Superior volunteer in our disaster assistance team and responds to assisted... Just suspicious with home fires.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
You also do smoke alarm installations and been deployed in Red Cross shelters at several disasters, including the recent Northern California flooding.
Correct.
Thank you. Read the proclamation. Seat of American Canyon Proclamation. Recognizing Red Cross Month 2023. Whereas during the American Canyon Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of the City of American Canyon and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. Whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of American Canyon, whose simple acts of kindness to the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, thereby continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for our neighbors' needs, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, donating life-saving blood for cancer patients, accident victims, and people with sickle cell disease and other life-threatening conditions, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers, through the unique challenges of service, using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid in recognizing loved ones separated by crisis around the world. Whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the needs and how to meet it," and ask everyone to join in the commitment. And now therefore let it be... That I, Leon Garcia, Mayor on behalf of the American Canyon City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as American Canyon Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens of American Canyon to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Thank you. Congratulations.
I did one earlier today in...
Thank you so much for what you're doing. They had to catch up with me. Said they had to catch up with me to sign it.
Thank you very much.
You want to get a photo? Want a picture? Yeah, we'll come around.
Oh, you were?
Yeah.
Well, I thought the mayor was active in part.
Oh, awesome.
Well, thank you, City of American Canyon. This is great to be honored. I am a local resident. I have been with the Red Cross for over five years since the Tubbs fire. Generally, people join the Red Cross after a major disaster, whether it affected them or fronted theirs. We do have a lot of programs, whether it's volunteering, which is over 90% of us are volunteers, either local for home fires or disasters within the United States. I've done hurricanes, floods, tornadoes, wildfires. What else? I don't know. But we're always looking for more folks to help us out. We also do installing smoke alarms for mobile home parks. If you know a mobile home park that needs it, give the Red Cross a call. We do come out and install them in. Also, home fires, if you get a home fire, where the fire department does a great job of contacting us, and we try to get out there as soon as we can so we can give them any assistance that we can. And like I said, we're always looking for more volunteers.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, happy to help you get the message out there and search of volunteers. Thank you. Next is our proclamation, National Women's History Month, March 2023. And I think we have Beth Goff going to come. Bravo.
Come on up, you guys. Everybody, come on up. So when I was... When I was asked to accept this on behalf of the city, I knew... Okay, there are some females over there. Come here. Ally, come on. Come on. You bridge the gap. I felt that I... I did not represent our city, and I wanted to invite as many women as possible to come and accept this on behalf of the city.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Hope that was okay.
That's a great idea. That's a fantastic idea. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Well, let me read the proclamation. Oh, I got to get some background history, too. You've been a teacher at American Canyon for 22 years, moving from the middle school to ACHS in 2010. I think some of us remember you at the middle school.
You might. You might. I believe you were in my classroom several times.
That's right, yeah.
Absolutely.
Great group of kids.
No, not as a student. Not as a student. Thank you for clarifying, Cassada. Yes.
Yeah, what I see grownups and I've been in their classrooms tells me something. I can't quite figure out what that means. She began a link crew mentoring program, FNL Club, S-Club, and all of which she currently serves as advisor, along with the Peer Court Club. Beth is a past NBC trustee, not a college trustee, and a current member of the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce Board, a member of the Kiwanis Club and American Canyon Serpent Club. All right. Good work. Well, it's truly an honor this evening to present you with a proclamation. Seat of American Canyon Proclamation, National Women's History Month, March 2023. Whereas in 1987, the United States was formally recognized March as National Women's History Month, setting aside March to inspire those globally to learn about women's history. And whereas American Canyon women of all races, classes, and ethnic backgrounds have positively contributed to the city by playing a vital role in every sphere of life inside and outside of the home, to build strength and compassion and to express their vision for this community as it grows. And whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolition movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements such as the peace movement, which creates a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and under-valued in ways of science, literature, teaching, and the study of American history. And whereas Serpent Club International of American Canyon encourages the City of American Canyon residents to join in the observance of National Women's History Month and to educate and pass learned wisdom regarding women's extraordinary contributions and on the progress still needs to be reached equality. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Leon Garcia, Mayor, City of American Canyon, do hereby proclaim March 8, 2023, as National History Women's Day, and proclaim the month of March 2023 as National History Women's Month. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're going to get a photo up here.
We're going to get a photo.
We're going to get a photo.
So everybody else come in. Okay, why you sit down?
Come on, Fran. Come on, Beth.
For the other gender. I'll get up on the diet.
A little more smooshy though.
Smooshy.
The face... Wait, Beth and Fran should be in this picture.
Yes, they should.
No, come on. You guys are... You could just care. Turn your chair. The face painter is bouncing all over.
Thank you. Thank you for getting them. Exactly. You need fun people. You need fun people. All the chairs got moved. You had to be in the picture. I'm glad that you guys did. I would have been so sad if you hadn't. No, you're good. You're totally good. Trust me. You got to be comfy. You're going to be there a while. Oh. Is that why he's sequestered? All right. Yes.
Ms. Goff, we'd love to hear from you.
We have to switch chairs first. No, you're totally good. Don't worry about it. Sure. Got to watch out for each other.
Scooch it in.
All right. All right.
Yes, I look forward to seeing the YouTube.
Yes, exactly, for the chair. Well, I want to thank you very much for the honor of coming up here and accepting this proclamation. As you can see, we have wonderful, wonderful women in the city who joined me, and I'm really, really excited that you're all here. For those of you who don't know, I know you hit a little bit on the history, but Women's History Month actually started as Women's History Week in 1978 in Santa Rosa, California. That's where the National Women's History Museum resides. Actually, it's in Windsor. It wasn't until, well, March 8, 1980, Jimmy Carter was the first president to acknowledge Women's History Week. In 1987, Congress proclaimed March as Women's History Month, and every president since then has acknowledged March as Women's History Month. So the National Women's History Alliance has declared the theme "Celebrating Women Who Tell Our Stories." Sorry, I get really emotional about this. I used to teach Women's History Month every year.
Oh, fantastic.
So I would like to encourage all the women gathered here today to tell your stories. Make sure people know who you are because you can influence and inspire our next generation. And that's all I have to say because I can't talk anymore. I'm sorry. Thank you again so much for the honor. We appreciate it, and I'm so proud of all of you. I can't stand it. So thank you all for coming. I really appreciate it.
Well, we certainly thank you for all you've done throughout the years with this and all women present for their... For the contributions, making a better community, you know. I just would reflect that being at National Women's Month, the television station KQED doing a tremendous piece on the historical background of women's movement in attaining equality and the voting right and other things as well. So thank you. Okay. We're going to move on with our agenda now. Have we received any public comment on items not on the agenda?
Mayor Garcia, I have a couple. I'd like to call William Baker.
We'll pause for a moment while we clear.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Two items I'd like to share with you this evening. First, thank you personally, Mayor Garcia, Vice Mayor Washington, Police Chief Greenberg, and City Manager Holly for the time this past Saturday morning at the Veterans Memorial Park. I am willing to wager that this was the wettest American Canyon community event outside a pool party at the Philip West Aquatic Center. Speaking for myself, I am pleased that you all took time to meet and understand firsthand concerns from neighbors on both sides of the Napa-Solano County line regarding the Broadway Project. Unfortunately, city-elected officials and professionals from the City of Vallejo did not seem to have the same level of interest or sense of responsibility to engage their voters and constituents. I was particularly pleased that so many of those who attended work in the healthcare industry and had the opportunity to share their professional experiences with city leadership. We also had youth and parents that expressed their current concerns for the future safety of the park. I am pleased that Mayor Garcia once again follows citizens concerned and called for extra lighting and perhaps other proactive measures in the park, just like we all took our raincoat Saturday morning. Better safe than sorry. Second, I attended and spoke at the Solano County Supervisor's meeting this morning. The supervisors chose not to provide the 1.05 million requested funding for the Broadway Project. Additionally, HCD, the only entity to provide funding so far, rejected the Broadway Project on a request for an additional grant of 2.56 million in February. It is still a bit premature, but it appears there might be some compliance issues with the statutory procedures in the distribution of grant funds for this project. This is all I can say now, but I will provide you with my findings in writing as soon as I am confident they are accurate. My thanks again for your continued interest in protecting our parks and neighborhoods and opposing the Broadway Project. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another speaker?
Clarence Mamoril.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and City Council. I'm Clarence Mamoril, President of the American Canyon Art Foundation, speaking on behalf of the Board of Directors, who are also present tonight. We also have some Art Foundation members also present tonight. The Arts Foundation has advocated for our local artists, who have shared their visual and performing arts for over 30 years. City residents benefit from our effort in many ways, especially through our arts, music, and cultural events like Pumpkin Path, Juneteenth, Friday Nights at the Plaza, youth art shows and contests, and the ACHS Art and Music Fest. Art in a multitude of forms and mediums expresses creativity, beautifies our city, and is essential for maintaining mental health. The City of American Canyon has always been a valued partner in our shared goals of bringing art and its benefits to city residents. Our Board of Directors and membership know that a major stumbling block to achieving these goals is lack of a physical space, a place where we can exhibit members and local students' visual art for viewing by the public, a dedicated area for arts, culture, and music events, and for fundraising activities. So we are here in hopes that City Council and City Manager Holly will consider as a future agenda item and discussion topic an agreement with the Arts Foundation for long-term use of one or more classrooms at the former Napa Junction Elementary site. We applaud the recent efforts of City Council in getting the site ready for use. We understand that these efforts take time, and many issues need to be worked out before the Napa Junction site is available for use. So we are here tonight to timely communicate the needs, goals, and this proposal by the Arts Foundation in good faith and are available for further discussion. We would be greatly encouraged to know that the proposal is accepted positively by council, especially next month during arts in April, when arts are publicly celebrated in American Canyon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is another speaker?
That was my last in-person. I do have one on Zoom. I have Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Teresa. I think I can't see you guys.
There we go. Okay, we have you on Zoom, Justin.
Okay, but I can't... I can't see the whole page, and I can't see anybody.
We can hear you.
Okay. My question is, is it almost time to cut down our grass? I think it's almost time to, I know the fall season is coming up, so I need somebody to start mauling the grass. Wasn't carrying some more.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Justin. Can you turn up the volume a little bit?
Can anybody hear me? I'll turn it up. Can I hear me?
Proceed, please.
Okay. It's almost... It's almost time to get somebody to come down here, cut the grass before the fall season is coming. Thank you.
Appreciate your concern, yes. There's a schedule for taking care of that.
Thank you, Justin.
Anybody else online?
I have no other hands raised.
Okay. You have one more in the audience here?
Yes, good evening, Beth Marcus. In addition to the National Women's History Month, I just want to announce that we have a celebrity in our audience. She is being named the Woman of the Year for Napa County, and it's Fran Lemus.
Wow, bravo. So if you could fill in a little more background on how that occurred?
I got a call from Mike Thompson.
Uh-huh.
And he said he wanted to name me the Woman of... He gets to name women from each county, each city, and he said for the county of Napa, it's going to be me. And I says, I don't deserve that. I says, I have fun. You know, I enjoy what I do.
Well, that's part of doing good work, Fran, so thank you so much.
He did nominate me, so I'm very honored.
All right.
And it's going to be a fun time. It'll be enjoyable. So thank you. Thank you.
We need to have an official proclamation document. We need a photo op type of thing. Thank you, Fran. Well deserved. Well deserved. Any other public comment?
I have... I have no one else.
Okay, and no one in the audience wishing at this time? Then I will close public comment. We'll move on with our agenda. We have agenda changes. If there is no item to be pulled, I will accept a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent calendar.
I'll second. Motion's second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamas.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council. Moving on in our agenda, Item 10, Public Hearings, Development Impact Fee imposed on behalf of the American Canyon Fire Protection District. Just fill that out. Recommendation, way first reading by title only and adopt in ordinance accepting the development impact fee. development impact fee, Nexus Study, and levying a fire capital facilities fee on new construction and development to fund fire protection services.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and
Chief Bellia, welcome.
Members of the Council, my name is Jeff Bellia. I'm the Fire Chief for the American Canyon Fire Protection District. So, tonight, tonight here, we're asked, the Fire Protection District is asking the City Council to approve an ordinance on our behalf establishing a fire facilities impact fee, fire capital facilities fee, for areas covered by the American Canyon Fire Protection District within the boundary, geographical boundaries of the city of American Canyon. A little bit of background, why we're coming to you tonight, I'm coming to you tonight asking this, is that the Fire District Law of 1987 does not allow fire districts to charge fees on new development. However, it is a common practice for fire districts to work with cities and counties to impose an impact fee on the fire district's behalf. This approach is effective, given the mutual interest in cities and fire districts to adequately fund fire ser, fire services to protect the lives and properties of residents. So, a little bit of background, the current development or impact fees that the Fire District charges were a voter-approved measure that was approved in 1986. This was in direct result to Proposition 13 being imposed, which capped property taxes. As you're all well aware, fire districts are somewhat limited in our revenue compared to cities or other municipalities, where the preponderance of our revenue comes from property taxes or special fees that are approved by voters. So, the, the fee that was, or special tax that was approved by the voters in 1986 had an annual inflationary clause built into it. In today's dollars, that means for impact fees, fees in which a developer needs to pay at time of building permit issuance, the Fire District currently collects 27 cents a square foot for residential development, 33 cents a square foot for multifamily residential, commercials such as hotels, supermarkets like Walmart, 50 cents a square foot, and then industrial, like many of the large buildings we see out in the Green Island industrial area, excuse me, 60 cents a square foot. The proposed capital fees tonight that I'll talk about in subsequent slides would be inclusive of the special voter-approved fees. In other words, we're not going to touch those fees because they were approved by the voters. So, in other, what we're going to do is we're going to layer the new fire capital facilities fee on top. So, once that fee amount of 98 cents a square foot is imposed upon the developers, the Fire District will collect that 98 cents and then provide a develop, the developer a credit for the current mitigation fee or development fee that was approved by the voters in 1986. So, to be perfectly clear, we're not asking the developers to pay the 98 cents, plus in the instance of single-family residential, another 27 cents on top. What we'll do is, because both fees will have an inflationary clause built into them, we will ask for the 98 cents and then issue the developer a credit for the 27 cents. In addition, the, the Fire District also, through a City Council-approved ordinance, charges a one-time special aerial fee for buildings exceeding two stories or 32 feet in height. This fee is static at 50 cents a square foot, and there is no annual CPR or inflationary clause adjustment in that fee. So, a lot of people ask, well, what is the use of a development impact fee? What is it used for? Well, quite simply, it's used for one-time capital purchases, such as purchasing land for fire stations, construction or expansion of fire stations, purchasing fire apparatus, vehicles, or other capital acquisition, such as our personal protective gear that we wear, our self-contained breathing apparatus that we have required to wear inside a structural fire, and then obviously, the financing costs that are associated with the above-listed capital expenditures. The benefit relationship, what is the benefit relationship for the community or the development community to the Fire District with these fees, or in the case, the city adopting the fees in ordinance on the Fire District's behalf? So, fire facilities and capital equipment fee will further fund the district-wide network of services accessible to the additional residence or additional development that occurs within the geographical boundaries of the Fire District. So, in other words, it is designed to maintain the existing level of services to ensure that the Fire District can provide the existing level of services with the addition of development or additional residences within the Fire District. These fees are not designed to increase services, but to maintain the existing level of services that obviously will put a additional tax or strain on, on the services that we provide currently. The methodology that was done, so as the Council may have be aware, late last year, the Fire District adopted a long-range master plan that was done by an outside consultant, AP Triton. So, using that long-range master plan, compared to what our existing capital inventory is, fire stations, equipment, so forth, then taking what is the existing square footage of the buildings within, in this case, the city of American Canyon, the growth projections that were provided from the city and incorporated in the master plan, they then take that, they take that, they combine those numbers, and they determined, they calculate what the public facilities fee is by allocating the total cost of the facilities per unit of development on a square foot basis. The Fire District retained a consultant by the name of Capital PFG that completed this study roughly in July. And again, it was based off the long-range master plan that had recently been done for the Fire District. So, they were using the freshest available information when they conducted this study. So, this is just a, a couple charts that, that help illustrate what we currently have is square footage within the city, roughly 22 million square feet and some change. They anticipate roughly about 10.7 million square feet of new construction within the city, for a total of about 33 million square feet of total development within the city. They then take the estimated costs, like I talked about earlier, our existing capital inventory, fire stations, equipment, fire engines, and so forth. They divide the estimated cost with the service, estimated service, serviceable square footage, and they came to roughly 98 cents per square foot is what their calculations were. So, if we look at the, the following chart, as I stated earlier, I read what our existing fees were, based off the voter-approved measure in 1986, what the proposed new total impact fee is, and then what the net impact fee would be for each different type of development. As part of the process, the, because of this, this current demands for Fire District services, it was essentially, the consultant's recommendation was that we go to one single flat fee district-wide instead of changing it per occupancy type. That is because essentially, whether it is a commercial service or residential service, they project, they put essentially the equal strains on the service delivery for American Canyon Fire Protection District. One of the other questions, and I think this is good to include in context, is part of the study, they also analyzed and looked at comparable fire districts' current fee structures. So, you can see, it ranges a little bit, everything from a flat fee in Amador County of $1,400 per residential to $2.23 a square foot in Cordelia, which is obviously just over the hill from us. Another comparable, two fire districts very close in Sonoma County, Sonoma County Fire Protection District's $1.62, Sonoma Valley's $1.72. So, you can see, while our, our fees are, as proposed, do provide a increase to the developers, they are still relatively inexpensive to comparable fire districts within Northern California. So, why is this important for the Fire District? So, unfortunately, current fees have not kept costs, kept pace with today's, today's costs. I've provided a couple examples that I think illustrate that very well. 2005, the Fire District purchased, purchased a Type 1 fire engine. Those are our larger structural fire engines that you see our crews responding in every day. So, in 2005, the cost of a, of a Type 1 fire engine was approximately $240,000. Just last year, the Fire District Board approved the purchase of two Type 1 fire engines for approximately $830,000 apiece. Quite a increase in price, and unfortunately, that is something that we have absolutely no control over. Also, as part of the master study, or master plan, Fire Station 211 on James Road needs to be relocated further north due to the growth, the northern growth of, of the city and subsequent service demands placed on the Fire Protection District. Current estimates for construction have gone up considerably, roughly about $1,000 a square foot is the estimate. We estimate we would probably need between 15,000 and 20,000 square feet to build a facility that is not only good for today, but also for the future. Obviously, with the, the costs, we want to ensure the sustainability and functionality of, of our facilities for decades to come. So, that would roughly be 15 to 20 million, and that is absent the purchase of any land. So, why is this all so important is, by approving the fire capital facilities fee, this will help ensure that the American Canyon Fire Protection District is financially positioned to meet the future growth of the city of American Canyon and the unincorporated portions of Napa County, which it protects. Obviously, the, the City Council tonight would only be making the approval of the ordinance on behalf of the city of American Canyon. We would then have to go to the county of Napa and ask for the same ordinance to be approved for the unincorporated portions of the Fire District. I think it's very important to note that the fire capital's facility fee will ensure that the district continues to collect the necessary funds to construct a new fire station, acquire the apparatus and equipment needed to serve new development, avoids any negative impact on existing service delivery because of the need to serve new development, and provides a fair and equitable and reasonable allocation of improvement costs for all future development. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Well, Chief Bellia, thank you for the presentation. It's pretty clear, as American Canyon continues to grow, from the, well, just the state-of-the-city presentation at the Chamber of Commerce today was getting to a lot of those in more detail, certainly that we're all aware of. And we need to be able to expand the service, and there is a cost associated with that. So, we need to have a reasonable cost projection in terms of what future growth we'll, we'll need. I just, a question, I would have more on the timing of that. If we need, I forget the square footage for a new facility, but when would that have to be operational, given the way construction's going now?
Well, you know, it's a several-year process between acquiring the land, designing, build, till occupancy. So, we would start looking now for, for the, the land site, that's the first step, right? And then after that, then selecting an architect, deciding if it's going to be a design-build, we'd have an RFP process, we have to figure out the financing as well. So, it's still a couple-year process, but, you know, the important thing about public safety is we have to anticipate the growth of the community that we serve.
Yes.
We can't wait for the growth to occur and then be reactionary to it, because while you have that reactionary period, you don't want to potentially have a degradation in services because the fire stations aren't evenly spaced. There aren't adequate crews on hand or equipment. So, we're trying to look ahead of where the development is going in the timeframes, so that we ensure that we're prepared when that development does occur, when the build-out does happen, and that the public and the visitors here to American Canyon see no appreciable loss in services at all.
That would be very good planning, indeed. Thank you. With that, Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, Chief. Just to be clear, I, I think it came through, but I just want to be clear, we, the Fire District Board just recently clarified that, through a clerical error, that the aerial fee was reduced, but now it's back.
Correct.
So, what you're asking us is to adopt a fire impact fee of 98 cents a square foot, and the aerial fee of 50 cents is still in effect?
Correct.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Vice Mayor Washington? Yeah, to City Councilmember Joseph, I did see that there was a recommendation that we need to approve tonight for that as well, so I was going to ask you about that.
Yeah, you shouldn't need to approve for the aerial fee, that's already been in place.
Okay.
It's just for the 98 cents for the facilities' capital fee.
Okay, okay. Well, other than that, I think you did an excellent job explaining it and breaking it down, you know, for the community, for myself, but I'd be curious to see what other public comments might be out there for questions they may need to ask, but I think you did an excellent job
Thank you.
breaking it down. So, thank you.
Yeah, and, and just as a point of clarification, I have done some outreach with some of the local developers about this and had discussions, and I was actually surprised, they, they kind of looked at me and said, you should charge more. And I said, well, the study says this is what we should do, but to their credit, they understand the importance of having a robust public safety system within American Canyon. It makes the city a safer place, more attractive place for, for the people to come do business or live. So, they were in support of, of this fee to help maintain the high level of public safety that is enjoyed by the residents of American Canyon.
Very good. Any other comment from our Council? Are we ready for public comment? This is a public hearing. Let me get back to that page. So, the public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public wishing to comment?
I just have two questions. The first one is, as you said, that after we're done here, that you have to go to the county. And, and my question to you is, what if the county says they don't want to approve it? Can we, do we then charge a fee every time we go in there? And that's the first question. What if they don't want to participate? I don't know why. The other part is, is, is when the old station 211 moves, is it, that's sort of different than the impact fee, but is it for the new station, is, is the money made that is, that property, if that's sold, will that be used for the new station?
Thanks for those questions, Hugh. No, perfect, those are very good questions. So, the first question is, what if the, the county decides to not approve our fire capital facilities fee? I'm hoping it doesn't get to that. I think, especially in the recent experiences here in Napa County, I think that fire safety is at the forefront of everyone's mind, and ensuring that the public and the visitors, the tourism, 3 million tourists a year visit Napa Valley, I think that the county would want to ensure that both their residents and their tourists are safe here. As for the, the James Road station, there's a couple options that we're looking at, but the intent would be that when we decide to leave James Road, whatever funds, or if it's another sort of a transaction, that would help be applied to the construction of the new station to help defer any potential financing costs. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Do we have anybody online?
Mayor Garcia, we do not.
Okay, very good. If there's no public comment on it further, then I will close public comment. We'll turn to Council for further discussion and comment. We'll turn to council for further discussion and comment. Anything, council, questions? Vice Mayor Washington?
No, I was just going to say if there was no other comments that...
No, I, I was going to do that too.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. Then I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number 2023, next in order, an ordinance of the city of council, of the city of American Canyon, California, accepting the development impact fee, NEXA study, and levying the fire capital facility fee for all new constructions and new development to fund fire protection services.
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Washington? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Thank you, Vice Mayor Washington. Councilmember Abadamas?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next in our agenda is business. That's item 11, pavement management program update, P T A P 23.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, American Canyon community. This is our biennial, approximately biennial update for our pavement management programs. This is all our city streets and our pavement condition. What is a pavement management system? It's a computerized inventory asset management tool that we use. It shows effects of maintenance decisions before and after. It helps us with our budget decisions. It's not our only decisions, but it's a tool that we use to help with those and also our local priorities that, that are given throughout the year to try to create a five-year plan or 10-year plan for our city streets. PCI is our pavement condition index, and it's from zero to 100. And we update this approximately every two years. It's required. We're actually in a one-year extension. But we're still in good shape, but it's a requirement to receive funds from the state as well as other participating programs, like our OAB grant, Lombaria grant, and other federal grant programs as well. Our 2023 pavement management system update is funded by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. They generously provide an 80% grant to agencies needing to update their every-two-year funding. It also provides our asset program software. So it was, I think, roughly, I think it's in the report, and we paid about $3,000 match. And then they select a consultant. They have several consultants that they go out to RFP for and request for proposals. And CAPS, or Capital Asset and Payment Services, were the ones that provided our scenarios or budget options report tonight. Our current PCI is 60, not fabulous. It's in the precipice. You go to our good, fair, poor, and very poor scenarios, and, and we're in that six... Well, I'll go to that next slide next, but we're, we're in that fair spot. We have 55.3 centerline miles, which is 111 lane miles, as we call it, when you have like two different lanes or you add up the different lanes. But in arterials, we have 2.6, collectors 16.7, and our residentials are forefront of all our streets, which is 36 miles. So this is the curve. We're in that precipice stage of fair condition where you start steeping off and going in. Everyone always asks, "Why, why are we fixing all the streets?" You're fixing the streets on the east side of town. You're fixing some of the newer streets. Why are you doing that? Because it's cheaper to fix them when they're in good condition. When we start dropping off into that red zone, we're talking about full reconstructs, like Green Island Road. I'll show you some maps in, in a second, but you'll see a lot of the greens and you'll see a lot of reds and yellows. So we're trying to raise our numbers up to get back up on that higher curve. So some of the strategies are like what we did this year. We did the two-layer treatments programs on some of our older streets that we could, we could fix those, but save our dollars for the full reconstruction projects and our collectors and arterials that take a lot more hits with our trucks, traffic, and, and other commerce traffic. So we ran four budget scenarios, and this is our unrestrained scenario. If we had all the money in the world to fix our street in our deficit, $71.9 million in five years, it would raise our streets up to 85 out of 100. Scenario two is what our current program is, $2.5 million a year. We have Measure T. It's a 25-year tax that thankfully the county, county-wide taxpayers paid, approved in 2012. It would keep our PCI at 60. $5 million per year would start raising up that trend to 65 over a five-year period. $5 million a year, we, we don't have that right now, but maybe we get more grants and other funding in. Scenario four is a do-nothing. That's not going to happen because we have funds coming in, thankfully. What we didn't do in this four different scenarios is the one-time monies that we received in the last couple of years. We got the economic development grant, the Community Facilities District that's going to put a $12 million road widening and reconstruction of the grid, the Green Island Road District. So that's going to help raise our dollars. I think a, a fifth scenario was emailed to, to council members this afternoon. I didn't think fast enough to get that added, but then I went back in the 2016 report to council and our prior Public Works Director, Jason Holling, now city manager, had done that scenario of the one-time dollars. And that's going to raise our PCI up at least five points, or it says 67 in two years. That includes the one-time American Recovery Act funds of $4.9 million that council put towards the Rancho Del Mar area and to Knightsbridge, which also includes our utilities that are needed to be replaced in those streets of water and sewer. So that will bump us up, and then over the 20-year projection, we're going to stay about 65. We're going to drop down a few points if we don't get additional fundings that come in. But as people know, there's always grant funding sources that come available. We just need to be proactive and go after them to continue plugging in that $2.5 million. So here's the current PCI condition of all our city streets. There's a lot of green on the west side and the east side of town, and the very north where we just built all the Napa Logistics Park and Dublin Road. And there's a lot of red and yellows in there, a lot of red and yellows. And this is the unconstrained scenario. Everything's green. It's perfect. Here's the scenario of our current funding levels. Not too bad. It doesn't show the Green Island Road that's going to be done up here. Does not show the Rancho Del Mar area that's going to be done or, or Knightsbridge. So that's going to help bring those up to green. Here's our scenario of raising it by five points. Again, it doesn't show these areas that are going to be hit in the next couple of years. But that's a great scenario if we can get $5 million a year in. And then here's the do-nothing. That's not going to happen. We have funds coming in. But it's very scary, right? Again, these are the unconstrained needs. I'm trying to read the, don't try to read it. I'm just trying. I wonder why that's, we're shitting a bunch of those. This is the current funding, where this is like, these are the streets are actually... So if we did, we did the unconstrained, all these streets are going to be touched. This is the current trend. Those, only the streets that are going to be touched. And then there's the raise it by five points. More are going to happen. But as you know, these, these areas are going to happen no matter what. Our budget scenario data, this is just all compiling it, what I've talked about, the five-year, 10-year, 15, or five-year plans with the different funding levels. Again, we didn't have the scenario of one-time funding over here, bless you. Just show, but also, there's also something coming else down the pipe. There's discussion of a Measure X, and that's a redo of Measure T where we not only extend it, I think, out to 40 years potentially, but also allow debt borrowing against that incoming funds. That could help us do more now, $5 million or $10 million a year, if we could get that Measure X. That's something that's been talked about, the Napa Transportation Authority meetings, the board meetings, the technical advisory committee meetings, which we, staff participate in monthly. They put that on hold in the last election round, waiting for the more general election, thinking we'd get more voters out and hopefully vote for that because it's going to be the same tax, just extending it out with more modeling data. So that is all I have for tonight on this item. It's just a receive and file. It's part of the process. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Yes, it's raining and it's pothole season, clearly. Actually, technically speaking, is it a factor of how the, the new asphalt interiors with the old asphalt when it's wet, or is that an issue with repairing a pothole in the rain? Does it stick? Does it...
Are you talking like the current projects that were done?
No, just the pothole. You got a pothole in the middle of the street, and I'm assuming you got to get the water out right before you put the new asphalt in.
Correct.
Does it, does it an issue with the new asphalt sticking with the old asphalt?
It all depends on the method and the repair. So as we all know, there were some issues with AT&amp;T's patch repair on Cookie Hill.
Yes.
They just did a temporary fix-up, their cold patch. So ideally, you cut a two-by-two hole, depending on how depth they went, or problematic of keeping the patch in, and you do a more deeper plug and then patch it at the top.
Okay.
So it all depends on the repair work when it was done. If it's done during the wet, it's hard. Like, we did some, staff did some work on Green Island Road because we had to because there were some major potholes that came up after the rains we had over the weekend. So it's a constant battle. You got to fix them while it's still wet out. You do what you can at that time, and then when it's dry, you get out there and try to fix them properly.
Yeah, we, we got some major ones on Sonoma Boulevard as well. Not our jurisdiction, but somebody else's.
Well, and Caltrans has been trying to catch up to all the January. We had a lot of calls on Highway 29. I know I hit a couple that I thought were pavement, and they were deep holes.
Well, I just have some reference to that. Many, many years ago, I did a lot of help with asphalt repair. Worked with a gas company. You cut up the asphalt, so you got to patch it. Ours was all a cold patch and that pneumatic pounding device. I have some questions here. I really like the, the list of the streets. And if I'm reading this right, over here on the right-hand side says current PCI. So we have some that are very low, if not, well, let's see one here. For example, Hartford Way, Crawford to Donaldson Way, PCI 2, is that correct? Wow. Then we have some that are zero. And I know the south end of the city, down around Marla, one of those, it might have been Stetson or one near it, was down to the dirt. And I think it was the original asphalt from the 1960s or whenever. I really appreciate the approach on trying to solve this problem. Would everybody be happy if they fixed everybody's street? Yes, they would. Just show me the money. No, it's a reality check. We got to work with the funds we got. And I think it's areas of greatest impact. And certainly areas that have the greatest traffic would be a concern as well. And I know one, one time in the future, Teresa out here is going to be taken care of, so.
It will be with the Oath Hill project.
With the Oath Hill project, yes. All right. Well, thank you. I'll pass it on to Councilmember Joseph.
Yes, well, thank you for the report. And I always enjoy getting the latest PCI report because it does provide that level of detail about what our roads are and how things will look. So I would like to basically do a shout-out for, I guess, the third scenario, the idea of trying to, to bump up our annual funding from $2.5 million to $5 million. I realize Measure X is out there that could help, grants can help, but I'd also like to throw out for the council's consideration, maybe integrated into our budget discussions, that we need to start procuring, you know, we basically need to earmark monies. And I realize it's very difficult to go to somebody's budget and say, "Okay, we need $2.5 million, so we're going to, you know, chop out people and things like that." But we do have some big projects that have been approved or pending. And what I'd like to throw out is the idea that prospectively, we start earmarking a percentage of the new revenues that are coming from hotels or industrial projects and earmark it towards street maintenance or park maintenance or deferred maintenance in particular, so that as we grow, we're also setting aside monies to be able to do all these things that we need to do and when we need to do them. So that's just my comment because I think it will, it will do a great service to the community. The better we can maintain our roads, the better we can replace our parks when we need to. All goes towards a better quality of life. And, and given the fact that we have these opportunities coming, I think it's a great opportunity to say, "Let's just make it as a matter of policy to set some of that dollars aside and, and put it into a deferred maintenance fund."
And one key element I forgot to mention is that while we had all the money, if we had all the money for pavement, we still have our utilities. We don't want to go paving and tear it up like some of our other partners do. But we want to make sure that we're, we do have a list of where streets need their underground, and, and that'll be shown in our rate study that Director Felix Hernandez with Utilities will be bringing forth soon, as far as rate studies, as, as needing to start implementing our, our annual sewer and water main replacement program to make sure we can keep up.
Right. And, and also integrate it. In a city that I worked for, they had a very clever technique where they would underground the, or replace water lines and then obviously repatch the road. And they argued that the utility had to contribute towards the road because after all, we tore it up for their benefit. I'm not so sure our, our water and wastewater funds are in such great shape that they can afford to help in a similar manner, but it's certainly an opportunity when you combine, you know, extra funds. I'm sure the utilities can contribute something towards the repaving afterwards. And again, it, it's just another technique to spread your dollars further. So I'm excited. I'm looking forward to what will look like after, in two more years after we've done Green Island and done Rancho and a couple other projects. We could be at 67. I think getting to 70 is not an unrealistic goal. So, thank you.
Appreciate your comments on that. Councilmember Joseph, I think certainly looking at the budget, how we might address more of these needs. Just in terms of priorities, because I see a number of these are collectors, so that's getting more traffic on it, obviously. But you got some here that are, oh, 915, 611. Gets a lot of use, so it wears out sooner. So with the program of improving the streets, is there a priority given to collectors over residential?
We try to do a mix. And as you know, we bring back to council every two years our Measure T list. And we try to, we try to take into consideration this. It's just one tool in the toolbox for us to program our five-year street program.
Appreciate the information. We got, we got work to do.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Any other comment from council? Council ready for a public comment? Public comment on this matter is open. Did you get a good job answering your questions? Good. Thank you. Do we have anybody online?
We do not.
Okay. Well, public comment on this matter is now closed. We'll return to council. Hang on a second here.
Do we need a motion to receive and file?
Sorry?
Do we need a motion to receive and file?
No, Mayor, it's, Councilmember Abadamas, I'm sorry. We do not need a motion to receive and file.
It's informational. Thank you for the presentation. We look forward to all the work being done. Yeah, green streets. Right. Looking back in our agenda here, we have... Moving on to our management staff oral reports, Public Works Department quarterly update.
Hello again. I'm here to present our Public Works Department update for March. I'm going to start off highlighting our Streets and Storm Drain Operations Team. They maintain the streets, signs, streetlights, traffic signals, sidewalks, and storm drains, and even some of our parks, parking lots in the LLA districts. We have a staff of five total, the street supervisor and four maintenance workers. We're actually down two people right now, but we have a new hire coming in in a couple of weeks, so we're very excited about that. Coordination of Napa County on City Creek Maintenance. They do citywide street sign replacement that council just authorized, I think, two council meetings ago. Exciting things they helped finish this last year was Share the Trail, pavement markings on Wetlands Edge and, and Dublin Road and the new Bay Trail or East-West Connector on Eucalyptus Drive. They also helped with the, the Wetlands Edge. That's our staff actually right there on that picture that we're installing the speed bumps on Wetlands Edge over a year ago. And then they just helped in combination with DC Electric, that's our, our lighting contractor. They completed one of our ARPA projects, which is the Elliott Drive Enhanced Crosswalk Improvement. It's out by the Adole Activities Center. So if you haven't used it yet, we'll be highlighting that probably in an upcoming city manager's update or, or website update, but it's exciting to get some of those items done in-house with our in-house team. Capital projects completed in 2022. We had a total of eight projects that we got delivered in the calendar year on the Dublin Road Extension, Eucalyptus Sidewalk, the 2021 Annual Paving Project, the Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation, East American Canyon Road Rehab, a, a crosswalk improvement on Flosinette Daniel Drive, and then the ARPA Class 2 bike lanes, crosswalk upgrades, and then again, the ARPA Elliott Drive. I think it's important to note that all this work, other than Dublin Road, was designed in-house. It's pretty exciting that we have a good engineering team to be able to deliver these projects. It's pretty exciting that we have a good engineering team, um, to be able to deliver these projects in-house. Here's a highlighted picture of the Devlin Road and Vine Trail Extension Project that was celebrated last May. Eucalyptus Sidewalk Gap Closure Project. Um, it's nice to celebrate even the small projects. Here's a picture of the Annual Paving Project that you just approved completion of tonight. I actually have a, a separate slideshow that I'll show after I'm complete with this slides of all those streets before and after photos, so you can see what we did, um, this year.
What streets are in that photograph?
This is, I believe, Brophy. They had to do a special curb ramp there on Kimberly Drive. I believe those are mostly on Kimberly, but with the citywide project, it's hard to pinpoint each corner, but you, I'll, I'll have a snapshot of each street that was completed this year.
I think we have a, uh, program or plan to do so many of those curb cuts every year?
Yes. Yes. Um, capital projects in construction. Um, we have the Recycled Water Expansion Project, the Wetlands Edge Court, Green Island Road Undergrounding, that the, the groundbreaking ceremony that was postponed in January will be happening next Thursday, March sixteenth, at ten a.m. One eighty-nine Teresa demolition. Um, if you haven't noticed, we're allowing, uh, we have a great program. It's Valeo, American Canyon taking the lead, and City of Napa, they were doing some demonstrations and, and exercises out there today, and I think all of last week. I think they're almost done, but it's pretty exciting that you can have, on a project like this, have practice, um, that, that's real lifetime and no one's in danger, correct? So, um, and in coordination with parks, um, the Playground Replacements Project, um, and the Skate Park Relocation. Ally Iketa, the Director of Parks and Recreation, is, is taking lead on those, but we're helping assist with delivery of those projects. The capital projects that are in design or planning stages, we have, of course, the New Old Trail Open Space. This year's Annual Paving Project, Benton Way Paving and Striping. That includes the ARPA Enhanced Crosswalk at Chaucer Lane. Wetlands Restoration Plan, um, the ARPA Melvin Road Sidewalk, which was awarded for design last month. The Broadway Sewer Rehabilitation, um, this is between Napa Junction and Crawford, or Donaldson. I think I got that switched around. Um, the Stormwater Master Plan just kicked off. Wetlands Edge Enhancement, which is the bathroom and, and Outdoor Education Center. And then, um, that we'll be getting out this week is design request proposals for the Night Spread Reconstruction in the Rancho Del Mar area. What doesn't always get highlighted, but it's in Coordination Development, I don't want to steal their thunder, because this is part of their slides in the State of the City, are all the development projects that Public Works also helps assist on with the civil site planning. There's quite a bit here. You have the Jivinoni Hampton Inn Hotel, Commerce Court Wine Storage Warehouse, and then the PG&E Regional Maintenance Center. We have an engineer dedicated to this division, but also consultants and, um, for design, plan, check, review, as well as, um, construction inspection. It's a lot of work. We got projects under review right now. I don't want, you know, read them all out, because they're right here in front of you, but, you know, we have a lot of projects under review. Watson Ranch, that's, that's a big project by itself, um, that we have inspectors overseeing, and, and engineering staff out there, um, every day of the week, um, watching the progress on. It's exciting to watch that project. Need to get out there more. Um, residential development that's under construction is Canyon Estates, Oak Hill Apartments, and Napa Cove Apartments. Then under review is the residences at Napa Junction, additional units at Watson Ranch, and, um, and then a new townhome neighborhood, um, proposed at Crawford and Broadway. And this there is a beautiful picture that, that gets provided from Watson Ranch, and it's just gorgeous, the development that's happening out there, um, and, and the Lemos Point Project that's slated to open later this year.
That's really cool.
Yeah. It's a great photo. And then the other stuff that we're doing in, in Public Works is the We Heart State Streets Campaign. The twenty-twenty-two accomplishments, um, in the planning side was Napa County Office of Education, the Napa Bike Coalition completed their, their Safe Routes to School Report. City Council delivered and adopted the twenty-twenty-two Locurwe Safety Plan. We also, with the Berkeley Safe Truck Grant last year, um, completed the, the twenty-twenty-two Complete Streets Assessment, which focused on the Safe Routes to School Corridors. So it's nice to have the engineering side also correspond with the Napa Bike, um, the Napa County Office of Education's Safe Routes to School Report, and see how they overlapped and play together. And then we have a speed survey that we'll be bringing back to council in April, also with ordinance update, because some of the speeds did change, um, based on that speed review. In progress is the Traffic Calming Program update, um, first implemented in two thousand and eleven. We're gonna host a city council workshop at the city council meeting in May to, to go over any changes. Working with the Fair and Peers Consultant, same consultant that also assisted with the Complete Streets Assessment and our speed surveys, to help update it, and, and they have some good ideas on, on things to update in there that aren't in the previous or current plan. With an estimated completion in June, um, and also incorporating all the plans that were put together in this past year. There's a lot of new tools in the toolbox, so we want to make sure that we bring the best, you know, the best ideas forward, and also kind of see what our neighbors are doing. City of Napa's taking a big launch on, on their, their traffic calming programs. We're kind of seeing what they're doing and seeing how we could interplay what, what they're, um, recommending to do. We, we completed a lot of all our projects that were completed last year. As you can see here on this list, there was quite a few that included traffic calming and implement, um, traffic calming projects were implemented with those projects. You know, curb ramps, enhanced pedestrian crossings, and the bike lanes with the green, um, the green colors to help, the intersection, the visibility for bicyclists coming into intersection. And I don't know about you, but I always stop because the color's pretty. But it also helps you, like, visually see what's going on around you. Eucalyptus Sidewalk, and then installation of permanent traffic calming measures on Wetlands Edge. Projects in process are the Benton Way Enhanced Crosswalks and Class Two Bike Lanes. That'll go hand-in-hand with the Benton Way Design Rehab once the recycled pipelines are installed. The Melvin Road Traffic Calming and Sidewalk and Drainage Improvements. Traffic Calming is being partnered with Napa Cove. That's part of one of their conditions of approval. That probably will probably play in with the implementation of the actual project, but it depends on the timing. We want to get that implemented before occupancy hits for Napa Cove. Smart signs, a lot of our old radar feedback signs are just feedback. They don't actually collect data. So, and idea of, of actually collecting data help enforcement and, and help us identify how many cars are using that road. Working with City of Napa, they're, they're launching new smart signs. We, we actually replaced one on American Canyon Road East last year after the barriers were hit. We haven't started collecting data on that, but when we start implementing and placing some of these old signs out with new ones and maybe adding more, part of our speed, speed survey was identifying areas.
What, what data are they collecting?
Speeds, like the timing of, like, speeders. It'll kind of captures, like, oh, between seven-thirty and eight, there was five people going over the speed limit at certain speeds. It doesn't collect other data.
I've been caught there a couple of times. The sign tells me I'm going too fast. I was, I was being asked, what's that flashing lights? Is they're taking your picture?
There is some video kind of cameras, but I don't think they collect, they, nothing enforceable in this. But, um, I heard the, the quality of the technology is not great right now, but I'm hoping to hear more from what the Napa PDs found out. We're having a meeting next week. But for now, it's just collecting the time window on when, and also collecting just, just counts, traffic counts.
I was actually messing with that person, but they, they didn't pause and think for a second. Better slow down.
And don't take that as in the middle of anything, Chief.
And, uh, are there any questions on it? Oh, let me, before we go to questions, let me show you the other slideshow of the before and afters of this last year's, project here. It's pretty exciting when you see the conditions of some of these streets. Now, someone questioned the PCIs. We always question the two or zero. You know, if the surface of the pavement has still got the crown, you still have a solid, there's not wheel rutting or major cracks. It's just old asphalt. So there are ways to treat those. That's what we, I was talking with you last year during the State of the City or Retreat, was that there are ways to rejuvenate that existing asphalt. It's not gonna get you a higher PCI of more than probably fifteen points, but it's going to at least help make it smoother and a fresh surface for, for, you know, to, to use that kind of treatment on your local streets, on your, on your local residential streets, and save the big money for collectors and arterials. So here's Blanco, for example. The left side, he got really old asphalt. And it's just, it's starting to gravel and, and peel up, and, and then we rejuvenated it with the two-layer treatment on the right side. We had to do some digouts on some of these streets, um, but, but it's, it's kind of fun, though, when you have pavement people from either Caltrans or other agencies on these streets, and they call you, and they're, they're questioning your method, and then they back down and you explain, they're like, I know what you're doing, but I just wanted to question you why I'm not getting the asphalt overlay, and not, instead of, instead of a... But they extend, they, they understand we're extending the life of the pavement, but they just want more. You know, everyone wants more. But as you can see from the photos of, of Brophy, that was, uh, it was peeling up. You started getting gravel on the streets. This should keep it in a good shape for at least five years, extending it until we can get back there and do another slurry on top of it, or have additional funding to do an actual grind and overlay. Here's Corsicana. This is Fallen Drive. Oh, we got something fancy on there. Fallen Drive. More Fallen Drive, the intersection, and then when we're putting back crosswalks, we want to put the high-visibility crosswalks in, not just the two lines. And then we have Kemp Lane. Kemp Way. Yeah, you can see, you can really see the aggregated surface on this one. But you don't see, like, distresses. You know, you're still seeing a solid street segment. Here's Sheffield Drive. And then American Canyon Road East. We had a lot of digouts, six-inch digouts we had to do to replace some of the, the cracking on this segment of, of the town. I mean, this is a arterial. But as you can see, the, the new surface, you can tell from the old... And this is the, the crosswalk improvements at Daniel Drive on Flosden.
Very good.
New curb ramps on Gold Valley Way. Silver Oak Trail, and then the Bicycle Lane Intersection, um, highlighted green areas. The green's supposed to, to make it pop more, so, like, oh, I'm coming up to an intersection. The whole idea is you're coming to an intersection. It is bicycles, because bicycles are in that green lane, an obstruction, and obstruction improvement. So you kind of, it catches you off-guard, right, green? And at first, the design, some people put the solid stripe, but that's a higher maintenance requirement and not, maybe not as beneficial. Um, and then here's just more Sanandoa Drive. This is where also we did the manhole treatments. Donaldson Way East. And this is the manhole.
Oh, good on the manholes, yeah. There's a few of them over there that, uh...
Lot of phone calls.
Yeah. A real surprise sometimes, a real big jolt.
We're, we're studying Cartagena Way, because that's another, um, area with...
I, I was gonna bring up Cartagena, because it really is bad. I don't know how they did, I mean, it's really bad.
We're doing some, um, geotech to see what's going on down there, but it, we, I, anything's a guess right now, right? Whether it's failed section or, or just poor compaction, and, and that's all I have to present tonight.
Well, thank you. That looks great. You know what? I think it'd be great to have, uh, get that aerial view of, uh, the ruins. Take another snapshot in five years, in a five-year increments, just to see stuff happening. Because I think that's, will be an incredible historical record for what's happened in American Canyon.
I wonder if Terry, you know, Terry McGrath actually did it before, before all of the, the development. He probably has it.
He probably got it somewhere.
Time lapses.
Yeah. But, you know, I just think at some point, it'd be nice just to have that, you know, a display of that. Wow, look what we achieved here. Look at the, look at the, the dream realized, you know, in, uh, in what we have now. Wow. Thank you for the presentation. Any comment from council? There we go. Councilmember Joseph.
Well, I just wanted to quickly say thank you for the report, because it's very informative. And having been at the State of the City here this morning, I wanted to point out Brent is not here tonight, so you did steal, you know, you've got, like, most of the, uh, planning, uh, presentation wrapped into that, so...
Lot of coordination.
Yeah. No. Very good report. Uh, it's exciting to see all these projects that are, you know, getting, coming to fruition and being in progress. So I'm looking forward to what we'll see next year.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you.
Going up there, okay. So we have, uh... Mr. Hall, anything, uh, more on, uh, staff management oral reports?
Uh, we do have, uh, a couple of management reports. Uh, both Felix and Ally have management reports, and while they're, excuse me, while they're walking up to the podium, just a brief update from myself. As was mentioned by one of our public commenters, uh, we hosted, uh, a public workshop for community members regarding the Valeo-Broadway Project. Uh, this happened last Saturday, uh, over at the, the shelter near the playground, near the dog park next to the, uh, proposed project. There's about forty members of the community. We're out there in very inclement weather and conditions, and we thank them for, for joining us for that, uh, that conversation. So, um, the council had asked for that. That was a suggestion that came out of some of the public comments, and, uh, we did that last Saturday. So just wanted to put that out there for the record. That's all I had, and Felix and Ally have an update.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Felix Hernandez, Maintenance and Utilities Director. Director Iketa and I were over there roshyamboing to see who goes for you. She actually won, but I ended up going first. Um, two updates, uh, tonight. So, uh, on March second, the Sonoma County of Office Education had their STEAM showcase, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Myself, Water Systems Manager Dominic Patrick, Environmental Services Manager Pam Phillips, and Superintendent Brian Mittern volunteered to be evaluators. Nearly four hundred students, hundred and fifty projects, ages four to seven. We had a great time, uh, raising that goodwill capital. We were also, uh, pleased to see that, uh, Calistoga High School was there, even though it was a Sonoma County event. Calistoga was there, and they had a really good presentation. We really liked that one as well. The second piece, um, we did receive a certificate of appreciation from the EPA Water Sense Program. I mentioned it today, um, at the State of the City, the chamber, and again, goodwill capital. But, um, the point that I made earlier this afternoon was that it's not so much the appreciation, the certificate of appreciation that we, we put emphasis on. It's that we're able to build those connections through EPA, we're able to leverage those resources through the Water Sense Program, and, um, it, it just really bolsters that goodwill capital with them and with the community by having those resources. Those are my two updates. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, um, Mayor and Council. Alexandra Iketa, Parks and Recreation Director, I'm here this evening to tell you all the wonderful things that are happening here within American Canyon over the next two weeks. So starting on Thursday, um, March ninth, we have our PCS, um, meeting, starting at six-thirty p.m. here in the council chambers. On March eleventh, we have the American Canyon, American Canyon Bilingual Family Bike Workshop, and it's gonna be at Community Park One from nine a.m. to eleven a.m. On March twelfth, we have the Holly Festival at Community Park Two, and that's gonna be from two p.m. to five p.m. And it is rain or shine. I checked with Arvin today, so please make sure that you come and join us. It's gonna be a great, a great event. On March sixteenth, we have our groundbreaking ceremony for the Green Island Road, and that's gonna start at ten a.m. And then on March eighteenth, Napa County, um, is gonna be hosting a, um, a Zen Tangle event. It's an online class. Registration is required, and it's from ten a.m. to one p.m.
What is that class again?
Zen Tangle Event. It's an art class.
Oh, Zen Tangle, okay.
Yes, and it's an online art class.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing further from the city. Uh, we'll move on to Mayor and Council comments, committee reports, and future agenda items after that. Anything to add to yours, Councilmember Joseph?
Just a couple of things. Uh, as we also learned, uh, at the, uh, State of the City, which was a very fine presentation, I enjoyed it. But we also secured, tentatively secured, funding for the environmental review portion of the, uh, our twenty-ninth corridor. So slowly but surely, that project is moving along. Uh, life is good there. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that the Quanis Annual Crab Feed went, went well as far as the customers were concerned. Internally, it's like the analogy of the duck that looks calm on the surface and their feet are going crazy. You know, from, from our end, our feet were going crazy. But as far as everybody else thought, they had a great time, and we did too. It's a great new venue. And I do want to apologize, because of the crab feed happening on March fourth, which was the same time as the Broadway Project presentation, just as I was planning on heading out there, you know, the, the typical, the sky is falling on the crab feed. So I ended up dealing with the crab feed and missed the Broadway Project. So I, I want to apologize to the community. And I'm sure we may, we'll, we'll talk more about it, I'm sure, but I just want to let everybody know I had every intention of being there, and it's the crab feed's fault. Thank you.
Councilmember Abadallah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you guys know, I was, um, on the East Coast with my U.S. State Department delegation for the last two weeks, almost. One thing that I did want to bring up, one of the most relevant, uh, meetings that we had was at the UN, um, D.P. office in New York City, and it was actually about... One thing that I did want to bring up, one of the most relevant meetings that we had was at the UN DP office in New York City, and it was actually about climate change. So Councilmember Joseph, I know that you're on the Climate Action Committee, so I did ask for a copy of the slide deck that I want to share with you. But basically, the person that was presenting to us was one of the negotiators in the Paris Accords. And something that came out of that is every member country has to make a pledge every five years of what they're going to do to help combat climate, or, you know, slow climate change. And so of course, the presentation was tailored to our peers from overseas, so Jordan in Morocco, and one of the biggest issues in Jordan, as you guys have heard me say over and over again, is water supply. That country is dry, so they literally cut off your water at random times during the day because they have no water. So what she was explaining to us is we need to, we have a goal of keeping the climate temperature at 1.5 degrees Celsius or below. And if it goes above that, then we start seeing a lot of detrimental effects to the environment. But she said even with the aggregate pledges that have come in from the countries, that still gets us to 2.5 degrees Celsius, which is not good. And it was just, it was like a very, that, that conversation was like terrifying, but at the same time, it, it made me leave super optimistic because all of these countries that have signed on to the Paris Accords are taking it very seriously, and they're putting in a lot of work, and she's very interested. I haven't obviously followed up with her yet because I just came home at like midnight on Sunday, but she's very interested to find out what California is doing, and so I told her a little bit about what we're doing here in American Canyon. But I'm very proud of us after that conversation, I think we're doing good work, and I'm looking forward to finally adopting our climate action plan. So I'll share it with you as soon as I have the slide deck.
Thank you, if you could send one to me too, I'm being the new member on the Climate Action Committee.
Absolutely, I'll send it to the entire council, if you're interested.
Well, that sounds like an incredible opportunity for sharing something as large as, because it's a world impact, and hearing what other areas or challenges they're facing, and solutions they're finding. Well, always glad to share stuff that makes it better, thank you.
Definitely. Definitely.
Anything further?
That's all for now, the rest of the meetings were very tailored to the program, so they weren't very, they weren't specific to American Canyon. I just felt like I wanted to share that climate change stuff because it's so relevant to things that we're currently doing here.
Thank you for sharing that.
Absolutely, thank you for listening.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yeah, just two items, I think Ally hit this one, it's the Napa County Bicycle Coalition from 9:00 till 11:00 on Saturday. Yeah, Tammy Wong hit me up early, or today, to kind of make sure that I mentioned it, because it was true and dear to her heart, and she challenged me, so I'm going to be on my bicycle too on that day, so. The Napa County Bicycle Coalition, between 9:00 and 11:00 on Saturday.
Oh, where's it going to meet?
Yeah, Com Point One, Com Park One, 1400 Rio Grande. And secondly, spoke with, or communicated with Cindy Beederman and Eve Reiser about safe storage ordinances that were passed in Napa, City Council, St. Helena, and then Yottville, I think it's a great ordinance or a great process, or just great that they even considered doing that, securing weapons properly. And I think we should, we should jump on board as well for safe ordinance, you know, when you, when Erica was talking about safe streets, it could also associate with that as well. Far too often, we find children in schools right now carrying guns, and I think a safe ordinance would, would definitely be in play, and it will show that we educate our gun-holding people to, to properly secure those things. So hopefully, that could be maybe a future agenda item that we, that we discuss, but that's near and dear to my heart, I'm sure it's near and dear to your heart too, chief, to make sure that those guns are safe. So that's all I have.
Yeah, I think on that note, I did have an opportunity to have a coffee with Chief Greenberg, he mentioned a device he was talking about, the cable attachment type of thing, which seemed interesting, it's something to consider in that process.
I think St. Helena has done some work on that too, and I think Councilmember Abadamas raised it one or two meetings back about it's something we ought to consider here, or some form of it here, so.
It's on the docket for May 16th.
Yeah, so we did talk about it, but the conversation was Cindy Beederman, I talked to her as well, what she's really concerned about is getting out the information, so like at the schools, to the community, because we talked about the difficulty of potential implementation, and so she's saying that implement, like, the ordinance has to go with like a huge information campaign, which I think she's also talked to Chief Greenberg about.
What's on the docket for April 4th is our Police Department Annual Report, I'm fairly confident some part of that will be addressing both the upcoming ordinance in May and then some outreach efforts that will follow up with that.
Let's see, just my committee report, well, the State of the City, as Councilmember Joseph mentioned, well, that was, that was a very good presentation. Credit a lot of detail, thank you all the city staff that participated, put together the PowerPoints and sharing the information. Shows what, you know, a lot to be very proud of what we have accomplished in American Canyon. It's more and more a very happening place in terms of not only building stuff, fixing streets, but you know, how we do it with respect to future generations. You know, what are we doing about climate action here? And I was also impressed, thinking back on the presentation that Terry McGrath did for the Planning Commission, on what's he doing in Watson Ranch, how that's, meets a lot of this criteria for reduction of greenhouse gas, you know, all-electric, how you build things, how how people engage in the community, walking, cycling, a lot. So anyway, it was an excellent participation today, I thoroughly enjoyed it, I think those slides should be available, Valerie mentioned, to those who participated today. I have to share. The Broadway Project, aka Home Key Project. Veterans Park in the Shelter, soaking wet, it was horizontal rain, it was, it, well, you know, I give it to everybody who hung in there, you know, it was important, it was important information to have. And Mr. Hawley, thank you for leading that presentation. It meant a lot to those who attended, and, because it's, the fact that the people stood there in horizontal rain, and the wind, for well over an hour, to hear what each other and to hear from the city, was important to them, and that just tells you how important that issue is to them. So I was thankful for our participation, I contribute what I can from my experience dealing with mental health in Napa State Hospital. I worked receiving suite for a number of years, and on some very active units as well, and then it was a higher level of management staffing the place. But I think all that just goes to show that, hey, we share their concern, and we have our interaction with our neighbors to the south, something that we need to work on also. But I know the invitation was extended to all officials that we needed to contact in Vallejo also. Crab key, crab key, sorry, crab feed, Kiwanis Crab Feed. You know, I think you were, you looked like you were paddling around a lot, but very calm demeanor, I compliment you on that, Councilmember Joseph, you kept your cool. But wow, what a, what a great evening, I mean, you know, just different venue, you know, different style, but I think the, I hope there was a great success, appeared to be. And I know from a fun perspective, we all had a great time, so we're looking forward to getting it next year. That would conclude my report, anything on future agenda items, council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a request, I'm looking at the list of future agenda items of note, and I see that the Ramadan proclamation is set for April 4th. I know you emailed me about it, haven't responded, but can we move that to the March 21st meeting? Because this year Ramadan starts at the night of the 22nd, morning of the 23rd. Of March, yeah, it's coming up very quickly.
Yeah, we certainly can do that.
Don't laugh at me. Thank you so much.
But let us be aware of any accommodations you need regarding that.
Yeah, I'm going to, per usual, I'm going to have to leave council meetings early to break my fast.
Yes, just so we can structure our agenda items such that the action items you can participate in, with those things you can vote.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
All right, if there's nothing further for the evening, thank you all, we are adjourned.
Good night, American Canyon.